Okay, you know that when you're doing chest compressions for CPR, go to the beat of staying alive. It's, that's what the, that's... The staying alive, so keep that in your head, in case you ever have to do chest compressions. Sorry, it was on your screen. Hands only CPR. But, do you want this? I don't want this. This is not... I know. But, this is like Chambers County, Chambers County Bank, this isn't for... Not our newspaper. Anyway. We have the Bay Area Observer. No, 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 it's been, it's been taken over. Sarah Copeland. Yeah. It's, it is up and rolling, and she has got new fire. She's very excited to have it. Yes, Sarah Copeland bought the newspaper, so it would stay open, because it was not going to stay. Well... Well... It's... Well, that's okay. Then, well, it's... It's awesome. Thank you. All right. Well... Hey, you know that when you're doing chest compressions for CPR, go to the beat of staying alive? It's, that's what the, that's... The staying alive, so keep that in your head, in case you ever have to do chest compressions. Sorry, it was on your screen. Hands only CPR. But, do you want this? I don't want this. This is not... I know. But, this is like Chambers County, Chambers County Bank, this isn't for... Not our newspaper. Anyway. We have the Bay Area Observer. No, 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 it's been, it's been taken over. Sarah Copeland. Yeah. It's, it is up and rolling, and she has got new fire. She's very excited to have it. Yes, Sarah Copeland bought the newspaper, so it would stay open, because it was not going to stay. Okay. How are you? Doing all right? Do you have any possum pictures? Do you have any possum pictures? Do you still have your possum?
You do, and it would come, and I think one of their...
So, they'll do adults that come, they like scratch to want to come in the house? What do they do? They don't come inside anymore?
No, I only have the thing that I picked up and brought inside, and then it would come to them or bring it in like an hour, and then when it started getting bigger, I'd...
Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the City Council meeting to order at 6:02.
Senior Pastor Walter Brumley of LaPorte River of God Church will give the invocation this evening. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today, asking for your guidance, asking for your wisdom over this meeting. Lord, I pray that you would continue to lead the mayor of this city, the other managers that are associated with it, the councilmen and councilwomen. And, Lord, we ask you to continue to put a hedge of protection around the LaPorte Police Department, the LaPorte Fire Department, and the EMS, and all the other various leaders that are associated with this city. Continue to lead them and guide them. And, Lord, we pray for your wisdom in this meeting tonight, and the things that need to be accomplished will be accomplished. And we thank you, Lord, for your will, and we thank you in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Our guest pledger was not able to be with us, so Chief of Police Scott Pullig has stepped in. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the... Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item 3B, recognition of October as National Community Planning Month in the city of LaPorte.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Madam Secretary. Yeah, so October is known as National Community Planning Month. This is a month to recognize, first of all, our citizen planners, so those residents of the city who give their, their time and their, their talents to serving on our Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as those zoning Board of Appeals. So, this is really to show our appreciation towards them, as well as show appreciation towards my planning staff. I'm very, very proud to say that I had a wonderful department. One of those divisions is our planning department, and so with just the three of us that are here, right back there, if y'all want to come up. So, just with these, these two and myself, we have nearly 50 years of planning experience, and so that, that's really something that we're very, very proud of. We're also doing a lot of really great things coming up very soon. The first one that will be kicking off is our South Broadway Liberal Centers Plan. So, this is in conjunction with HGAC and their Liberal Centers Program. So, that will actually be kicking off here probably within the next month or so. We're working right now through some consultant interviews with, with those folks, and that'll be a really great plan to really kind of reimagine that South Broadway corridor, all the way over, all the way from downtown, all the way to the south end of town, and then all the way over to the bay. So, very, very excited about that. And then also, sometime in 2026, we will begin a complete overhaul of our development code. And so, we're very excited about that. That will modernize our code, make it a lot easier for, for folks to use, for developers to understand, and, and develop in our community. So, just really want to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to my planning manager, my planner too, my planning technician can't be here tonight, and then also a huge thanks to our Planning and Zoning Commission members, as well as our zoning Board of Appeal members. So, thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to recognize them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Item four is citizen comment. The Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the members of the city council from responding to or speaking about any item that has not been properly posted. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole through the presiding officer. Insulting or slanderous language about anyone, councilperson or not, may be cause for termination of speaking privileges and removal from the council chamber. Please step to the podium when you are recognized and clearly state your name and address. Your comments are limited to five minutes. Remember that all speakers' comments or debate must be directed to or through the chair, not to the room at large or any other attendees.
Wade Thibodeau?
Mayor, respectfully, could we defer until the agenda item? Or would, I mean, I can speak now, but I'd prefer to wait till the agenda item.
Yeah, we can allow that.
Okay, thank you.
Maggie Anderson?
Okay, can we... Can we hear me?
Yeah, pull it down. Pull the microphone down. There you go.
Mayor, councilman, Corby Lee Clark, and citizens of LaPorte.
When you just say...
Oh, my name and where I live.
Yes, ma'am.
I have that next. Maggie Anders, Margaret Anderson, 909 Garden Walk, LaPorte, now mayor, da-da-da-da. This all started last November when Mayor Rick Helton called and asked me to be the city paper. I responded immediately, "I am not going to do 52 weeks a year." Rick said, "Well, we really need a weekly paper, and we're spending too much money with the Baytown Sun." Well, liking a challenge, I decided I would find somebody. So, after about four months, I finally got a co-planner with Wade Thibodeau, who is publisher of the Hometown Press. We have worked on dotting the i's and crossing the t's. We will come up, we have come up with a Round the Bay News, which is a special section to the Hometown Press, which would cover legal notices. We are currently the paper, the city paper for Shore Acres and Seabrook. We distribute currently the Hometown Press and the Around the Bay News to Seabrook, Kima, Shore Acres, Morgans Point, LaPorte, Lomax Area, and Baytown. We cover news from those cities in the Hometown Press and the special section around the Bay News. We would like to be LaPorte's paper of record, save you some money, and have Maggie behind you. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this that didn't sign up? All right, thank you.
Item five, consent agenda. Item five A, approve the minutes of the September 22nd, 2025 regular meeting of the city council and the September 29th, 2025 special meeting of the city council. Item five B, appoint Mayor Helton to serve as the city's delegate to the Texas Municipal League's 2025 Annual Business Meeting and councilperson Gera as an alternate. Item five C, retail recruitment contract. Authorize the city manager to execute a three-year contract for retail recruitment services with retail strategies in the amount of $50,000 per year for an authorization of $150,000, and authorize the expenditure of $150,000 by the LaPorte Development Corporation over a three-year period to fund the same. Item five D, authorize the city manager to execute a depository banking services agreement between the city of LaPorte and Amagi Bank. Item five E, approve vehicle and equipment purchases through cooperative purchasing contracts. Buy Board 70623, HGAC Buy HT 0620, and BT 0119, Sourcewell 050625, CFC, and 112624 KBA, and TIPS 240901, totaling $1,567,479.97. Item five F, adopt ordinance 2025-5004 for the purchase of real property located adjacent to the Five Points Plaza, legally described as lots 16 and 17 in Block 198 of Town of LaPorte, for an amount of $70,000 and miscellaneous closing costs for an amount up to $5,000 for a total authorization not to exceed $75,000, and authorize the city manager to execute any and all documents associated with this purchase. Item five G, adopt ordinance 2025-5003, providing for the repeal of ordinance 2025-4079 passed on September 8th, 2025, and which condemned a substandard carport structure located at 514 South Blackwell Street, LaPorte. Item five H, authorize the mayor to sign a letter requesting the Texas Department of State Health Services consider issuing an addendum to the report that disaggregates data by census tract on its 2025 East Harris County cancer assessment.
All right, this time, I'm going to recuse myself for one of the items. Mayor Pro Tim McCauley is going to go ahead and take over the meeting now.
Mayor Helton has signed an affidavit of conflict of interest for item five D.
All right, does council have any questions on any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda A through H as presented.
Here, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Williams. All those in favor? All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Item, item five F, an ordinance of the city of LaPorte, Texas approving the purchase of real property located on South Virginia Street and legally described as lots 16 and 17 in Block 198, Town of LaPorte, authorizing the city manager to execute an earnest money contract and all other documents necessary to accomplish the acquisition of said property, authorizing payment of the purchase price and associated fees and expenses attributable to the city of LaPorte, finding compliance with the Open Meetings Act and providing an effective date. Item five G, an ordinance repealing ordinance 2025-4079, which condemned a substandard carport adjacent to a single-family dwelling located on real property at 514th South Blackwell Street, LaPorte, Texas, and legally described as lots 19 and 20 in Block 34 of Bayfront, addition to the map of LaPorte subdivision, Harris County, Texas, containing severability clause and repealing clause, finding compliance with the Open Meetings Law, providing an effective date.
Item six A, the city council will conduct a public hearing in accordance with Section 394.9025A of the Texas Local Government Code regarding a proposal by the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation, SETH, to issue one or more series of tax-exempt obligations in an amount of not more than $22,500,000 for the benefit of LSP Partners LP in connection with the acquisition, rehabilitation, and equipping of a multifamily rental housing development located at 3701 Luella Boulevard, LaPorte, Texas, 77571, known as Seville Place Apartments, and consisting of 180 units, followed by discussion and possible action to authorize and direct the mayor to execute, one, a certificate of approval, and two, a general and no litigation certificate by the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation, SETH, for the benefit of LSP Partners LP for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and equipping of a multifamily housing development known as Seville Place Apartments, 3701 Luella Boulevard, LaPorte, Texas, 77571.
We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:15. Go ahead, Corby.
Perfect. Turn this on. That's probably better. Thank you, Mayor and council. So, as many of you, you're, you probably recall periodically, we will see something on the agenda from the Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation. We are one of 19 governmental organizations that are part of the governing body for the corporation. SETH has approached the city and would like permission to issue 22 million, 22 and a half million dollars in tax-exempt bonds, and the, this project would fund some renovations of the Seville Place Apartments, which is located at 3701 Luella. And part of the reason for the tax-exempt bonds is there's an affordability requirement that they have to be able to issue the tax-exempt bonds, which means those units have to be affordable. But, for the project to move forward, they need two things from the city, and, you know, which is what we're here to discuss tonight. One is they need certification. They need council's approval to move forward. And then, secondly, they need a certificate of no litigation, that we're not involved in any litigation involving SETH. So, here to, I, I want to make a couple of introductions. The executive director of SETH, Mr. Ron Williams, is here and can speak ad nauseam about, to answer any questions you might have, as well as our representative on the board of directors for SETH, Ms. Betty Moore, is here as well to certainly answer any questions. And so, if it's all right, I'll ask Ron to come forward and be prepared to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Corby. Mayor, council. Lee, how are you? Seville Place Apartments is one of the affordable housing complexes in the city of LaPorte. We issued bonds originally in 2004, so it's over 20 years old and needs upgrading and some renovations. The new owners have come to SETH for us to issue the $22,500,000 in bonds. The state of Texas actually has put a new rule in several years ago that we can only issue bonds for 55% of the eligible basis. That means the developers have to go out and find the other 45% in soft funds or from private lenders or equity investors. So, they're kind of hand-tied right now in being able to do the renovations. But, after 21 years, this complex is 100% leased to families below 60% of median income for Harris County. It's been a great place to live for many, many residents. You can't tell the difference between Seville Place is an affordable housing complex and a market complex, and we're very proud of that. They stay about 95% or higher occupied, so we've been very proud of it.
And, Mayor, if I, I'm sorry. If I could, I just want to point out, I think I pointed out in the, in the write-up, but I just want to make sure council's clear. Obviously, SETH does work in our community, provides down payment assistance, provides homebuyer education, provides mortgage credit certificates to, so, I mean, there's nobody else providing this service in our community. But as I understand it, Ron and you and I have had some conversations about this, this still brings SETH in as the general partner.
Yes, an affiliate of Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation will come in as the general partner and landowner. So we're very excited. We have 16 other complexes located within about 10 of our different jurisdictions where we are the general partner and landowner.
So the, and one of the things that I just wanted, I feel like it's my job to make sure you're clear on, is that removes the property from the tax roll.
Yes. Once an affiliate of the HFC is the general partner and landowner in accordance with court rulings, then the property is exempt from property taxes. That's very important to affordable housing in the state of Texas right now. I don't think there's been any affordable housing developed in the state of Texas in a long, long time if it doesn't have exemption from property taxes. Some of the main reasons is the high cost of escalating property insurance. We have some complexes, SETH owns two complexes, a 56-unit complex in Horton, and our property insurance went up 43%. We barely make $47,000 a year in cash flow from that, so it's a very difficult thing. But the other thing is the rates that we now have to get on the 45% that's not tax-exempt bonds is private equity and private lending. Therefore, those interest rates are much higher than our tax-exempt bond rates. Also, in the, in the real market, if property insurances go up, then private owners are able to go to their tenants when their, when their lease expires and raise their rents $100, $150, $200 in some cases to make up for that difference. In the tax credit units that we're speaking about here, which has been a long, always been with the Seville Place Apartments, we are under IRS guidelines, and we're lucky if we get to increase our rents by $10 to $12 per year. And so that's a big difference in, in creating affordable housing in the state of Texas.
Anything else, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I do have a question, and I'd like to mention before I forget that private landlords that also have homes are affected by property, by property taxes in a huge way.
Absolutely.
I've mentioned it time and time again from this spot on this dais right here, that runaway property tax values with Harris County Appraisal District are, are the killer in affordable housing, whether it's apartments or not. It's, I'm glad that we do this for y'all. I wish we could do this for private landowners as well to help keep things reasonable. Is this, you mentioned that this apartment complex will come off the tax rolls, but being a part of this program since its inception, if that is what I'm gathering, has it ever been on our tax rolls?
Yes, it's currently on the tax.
It currently is.
Because back in 2004, when we issued those bonds, all of these little aspects were not in play, and so it was affordable for the developers to pay the taxes.
Okay. Let me ask another question. Since it will be coming off the tax rolls, if your entity ever decides to sell this, is the next owner in line also exempt from the taxes? Or once it sells to a private equity firm, will it revert back to being on our tax rolls?
Well, we, we'll execute a ground lease, and so if they sell and do not assume the ground lease, then they'll go back on the tax rolls. Now, the, the case of this Seville Place is that the current owners, if we're not able to issue bonds and refinance it and resyndicate it, then they're going to let it sit there for a few years, not do any repairs, and they're going to sell it as a market, which means that they're going to make it a market rent, and the current residents probably would not be able to afford it. Thank you for your questions.
I'm, I'm sorry, just for clarity, you're saying if, if you, if you don't get what you need tonight, that that's, that's the future of that particular complex, is that what you just said?
Yeah. What has happened in the past and across the state of Texas is if the, this, the project is not resyndicated with tax credits, then the current owners will let the land use restriction agreement run out, which will be a few years, and they sell it as a market rental, on the market, and the rents will more than likely exceed what the residents can pay.
Anyone else have any questions? How much do we get a year from taxes on this one, Corby?
So it's between $60,000 and $70,000, right about $64,000 is my estimated tax value.
But I also want to say something. Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation knows it's, it's an incredible burden sometime for the cities and taxing entities not to get property taxes. We give back to our jurisdictions. I think Corby can tell you that we often give the city about every two or three years $50,000 to do affordable housing or related services. City of LaPorte has done a tremendous job in making emergency repairs and home improvements for the seniors using those funds. And in all of our jurisdictions in the cities that have exempt properties with us, every two years, we provide $5,000 grants to the police, fire department, and emergency medical services, EMS, for them to do anything they want. So it's a grant without any strings attached. So there's many ways we give back to the communities besides our single-family mortgage revenue bond program and the mortgages that we make.
Any other questions? And then one last question. This is the only property y'all will actually have in LaPorte, correct?
Yes, it is currently.
Okay. And where's the next closest one that y'all own, city-wise?
Well, we have four in Baytown.
Okay.
We have three in Pasadena, so those are the closest ones.
Okay. No other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams?
Just curiosity, which ones in Pasadena do y'all have?
We have Parkside Place, the Portofino, which is the seniors' complex. Testing my memory here, and let's see, Portofino, Pasadena.
Is the Portofino on the Beltway?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Pasadena Boulevard?
I was just trying to get a feel for how these places are maintained.
Sure.
That's a nice one.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
If I could add, I believe a couple of years ago, there was a bond issue related, similar project for Portofino.
Yes, we did that.
That, that came before this body to, to approve as well.
Yes.
No other questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this item? We'll close the public hearing at 6:27. I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the conditions as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Engelken, a second by Ms. Williams. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven A, presentation, discussion, and possible action to provide administrative staff direction related to the proposed project by Battleground Concrete at 1911 West Main Street, LaPorte.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'll reference this, okay. All right. Yes, so this evening, we have a workshop item that we'd like to bring before you. Really what we're looking for is some direction. So this is a project that is at 1911 West Main Street, and what they are proposing to do is battleground concrete, which currently has facility along the Beltway. They are looking to relocate some of their operations here to LaPorte. And what, what they are looking to do is a, a concrete plant with, with the assorted things that go along with that. So the project itself is, the site itself is owned light industrial already, but this project would require rezoning to heavy industrial. We have researched this area. We believe that if city council was interested in this project, that what staff would recommend is to rezone the site to a planned unit development and then regulate this through a special conditional use permit. There are several items that would need to be considered if city council is interested in pursuing this project. A plan, in terms of zoning, a planned unit development is typically intended for developments that are unable to meet the development standards of the base zoning district. In return for relief from certain development standards, the developer provides a unique project and/or a higher level of development than what is possible through the typical development process. Depending on the proposed site plan, staff would most likely request enhanced landscaping, decorative treatment of the concrete silos, which if you do see in your packet, they are proposing some of that already, and paving of the site with a dust-free material. The city's future land use plan designates the subject site as light industrial, so we would also need to do a future land use map amendment as well. Finally, because of the number of trucks that this site would generate, we would recommend that both Chapter 70 and the city's truck routes would be amended to extend Spencer, Spencer Highway Truck Route west of 16th Street to the eastern end of the Union Pacific Overpass. So several items here that we're, we're talking about. We're talking about a rezoning to a planned unit development, we're talking about doing a SCUP, we're talking about some sort of development standards with this, and then we are also looking at, more than likely, we would need to extend the truck route along Spencer to go west of 16th Street. And this is actually, the truck route item has been something that's been brought up a couple of times with some developers in that area. And, and extending it to that area kind of makes some sense in terms of it's, it's a clear line, and it would still allow for folks to be able, that are along the rail corridor, to be able to access Spencer Highway to get out to 146. So at this point, we don't have any official applications in. This is just, again, a workshop item to discuss the council's interest in pursuing this project, and we do have Mr. Preston Beard in here with Battleground Concrete who may want to speak as well.
Thank you.
Of course. So I will pull up these renderings on the screen here for y'all to see. So first, I'll kind of give a, just a real overview of the, the map of the property. So again, this is the property that you see kind of in this red backwards L shape bordered with 17th Street on the east and the railroad on the west. Spencer Highway would be to the north there. And some renderings that they are proposing. As you can see, they are proposing to do some sort of landscaping. This would be what you would see from the overpass. They are talking about doing some sort of, of treatment on the concrete silos, and they are talking about pushing those fairly far back on the site so that there would not be right there on, in, in the line of sight. Here again, there's some more. As you can see, the distance we're talking about, it's, it's probably about halfway back from the property, where you see the storage of the aggregate and stuff like that, that would be all the way back towards the rear of the property. And these are things that staff would, would want to see in any sort of a, of a SCUP. And then here is a little bit of a rendering of potential, you know, something that would be more of a, a little bit more of a welcome, welcome sight than just what you typically would see in terms of a concrete silo. So with that, I will turn over to Mr. Beard.
See, goes up enough. No, no, thank, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, obviously Matt, Corbin, Ryan, thank y'all for having me. Yeah, so for y'all that don't know me, my family, we, my, my, my father started Bayou City Industrial Contractors about 30 years ago, and we've been in, we've been located off of 16th Street here in LaPorte for, I guess, since 1999, so 26 years. So we have a long history in LaPorte, and we enjoy doing business here and calling this place home. But back in 2018, we started a concrete ready-mix company called Battleground Concrete, and currently our, our operations are based out of I-10 Beltway area in Channelview. And this property came available for purchase a few months ago, and I think there's been a few people interested in, in acquiring this property. I know that based off of talking to our real estate broker and talking to some folks with, with the city, it has its challenges, right? And for us, it solves, it checks a lot of boxes for us, you know, one, one of the biggest boxes, obviously being here in LaPorte and having our concrete operations based out of LaPorte, but also too, obviously, the distance to the Port of Houston, a lot of our, a lot of our customers are industrial contractors like Bayou City Industrial, so being here close to Bayport, LaPorte, Pasadena, Deer Park area, obviously is, is extremely beneficial to us. And so I come to y'all and I, I come to city council, we're, we're not under contract on the property, we haven't even made an offer. Obviously, we want to get y'all's appetite of, 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 you know, the possibility of being able to do what we want with the property. And yeah, so if y'all have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Preston, for your comments. Currently, that property has a bunch of trucks on it, right? And so it's for sale. I'm guessing he's going to move all his trucks out, but do you know what the, I'm curious what the other options, the other possible buyers might have in mind for that property. From the renderings that I'm looking at, I mean, it looks pretty clean. I, I mean, it's more appealing, I think, than what's there now. So based on what, what I know at this time. Uh, one other question in regards to the truck route, that property's not already on a truck route, even though there's like a million trucks in that location property?
I'm sure their grandfather.
So it's not on the truck route, but there's origination, destination exception. So, so we've got two truck routes, a high-frequency truck route, which is a zoning rule where only five NEX codes can, can be in service, and then we've got the truck route, which is just for normal traffic, truck traffic, and, and you have origination and destination. So if you have a product that's allowable on that property and originates there, you can take the most expeditious route to the truck route. That makes sense.
And also, just to answer your location question, the truck route stops at 16th. It, so it doesn't go any further west on Spencer than 16th.
But we're.
Hold on a second. Ryan, can you go back to showing the, the full aerial view of the property?
Absolutely. That one, and then.
There we go.
No, no, the.
The overhead.
The other one, the actual map picture.
Oh, oh, you're looking for the map, I'm sorry. There you go.
There you go.
So to, my understanding was this will not add any, any trucks to 16th Street, correct?
Correct. The main, the main point, the main entry and exit point would be, I guess, Spencer or West Main, and then what really makes this property convenient, especially when it comes to traffic and operations, is that you could take that loop underneath the overpass, and so you're obviously making that turn, not really impacting traffic, traffic at all, and then when you come back out onto West Main, you know, you have that lane, you have your. And then when you come back out onto West Main, you know, you have that lane, you have your dedicated lane pretty much to where you're getting on. And all of the roads, you know, so to kind of give, I know this question's coming, but to kind of give you an idea of how many trucks in and out a day that we're, that we would be expecting. And obviously, this would, this would rise and fall, you know, daily. But on average, you're looking at about thirty to thirty-five ins and outs a day. So you're not, I mean, like, like Councilman Martin just mentioned, like, there's trucks there currently. And I don't know, obviously, what, what their traffic is. But, you know, you're looking at thirty to thirty-five in, ins and outs a day essentially is what we're estimating.
Mr. Gear. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Call you down? Okay.
I'm not concerned too much with the, with the inbound side, because I know what you're talking about. You're coming in and you make the loop and you get back in the yard. But when you're exiting your, when you're exiting the yard on that side street going to Main, and I know this because every morning I'm, I'm on that, I'm on Spencer and these big trucks are coming out of there. And it's just what you're talking about, and it's just one truck, maybe two. And it's a pain for them to get over or even get on Spencer from that access. Because unfortunately, there's not a lane that they can proceed on to. That you're there and then they got to get into the, into a lane. And so I guess my concern would be as far as when you're exiting or leaving the yard to go make your deliveries, is how that would affect traffic there, because that light can get stacked up. And then, and then you've got your, you've got, like you said, thirty, thirty-five trucks trying to get out of there. So and on the inbound side, you're right, you just come in, make the loop and you're in. But it's the outbound side that concerns me, just watching this rendering or this picture right here, because I know exactly what you're talking about. I take that route every day.
Yes, sir. I mean, I, I don't really have a solution to that. That's just the way the road is laid, laid out. But you're right, I mean, that is emerging lane, I guess, right there at the light. It's kind of similar to what you see on kind of Fairmont Sixteenth, right, right there as well, right? It's just the distance between the railroad tracks and the, and Sixteenth Street is just, there's not much room there, so.
No, trust me, I'd much rather see this than what's there right now.
Well, I could tell you, I could tell you, you know, we've been in, we've been over off of Sixteenth Street for, like I said, twenty-five, twenty-six years. We take pride in, in our operations and how our building looks. And so I can, I can guarantee you that it would look a lot different than it is today, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
So I also have concerns about that, about the, the getting back on to Spencer. Because today I was just about run off the road by a truck right there, because I'm making a ride on Sixteenth to get to my place. And, and those trucks are, they are not heating the, the yield sign that Public Works was so polite in putting up for us. But that's an individual trucker problem, that, that's not everybody, that's just some. The question that I really have is what about dust mitigation? I've been to several concrete yards and the, kind of the common denominator with them has been there is dust everywhere. It builds up on the concrete equipment, it builds up everywhere else. What kind of a plan do y'all have to mitigate that?
Yes, ma'am, that's a good question. So we, we water all of our aggregates. And so we, we obviously keep the dust down on the aggregates. As far as the pavement, a lot of ready, ready mixed yards are out in the country and they have like limestone flex space or GS one hundred that's causes dust. Obviously, this site I think has asphalt. You know, anything that we would do to improve the yard would be concrete. And so that's going to obviously mitigate the dust a lot. And then as far as the cement, the, the silos, they all have bag houses on them. And so that, that, per, per Texas TCEQ, like, we're required to have bag houses on our silos. And so between those three, those three, those three items there, I think that mitigates the dust, you know, substantially. And, and, and then also too, real quick on your question about the, the drivers. So our trucks, they'll be, you know, we'll have, we'll bring aggregates in and out. And so you'll have tractor trailers. But currently, I know that, that business that currently occupies it has nothing but tractor trailers. And so from a safety standpoint, we'll have, you know, single chassis trucks. And so they won't be sticking out as much when they, when they come to, when they come in. Also too, I think a lot of owner operators operate out of that property. And so with us, like, we have the ability to train our drivers, you know, focus on, you know, the, the risks associated with getting on the road right there. And so Tyler, Tyler, I brought Tyler with me. He's our, he's my cousin that actually runs our concrete operations. We, we train our drivers substantially when it comes to driving safety and stuff. So, you know, obviously, if, if that's a concern for, for council or for anyone, I mean, like you said, I drive that, that road all the time and I know exactly what you mean. We, we take, we take, we take training our drivers pretty serious. And so that, obviously, that would be a, anything that we could do to, to help that situation, we would obviously be proactive in that, in that situation.
Do you foresee, I'm sorry, can I go ahead? Do you foresee it being mostly, because I've seen the battleground trucks, they're, they're clean and everything else. Do you see it mostly being your own trucks in and out of there? Or will you be providing concrete to owner operator drivers or to other concrete truck drivers?
Yeah, so the overwhelming majority will be our trucks. Like even, even, we have two, two, what I call tractor trailers, like that we harrow on rock and sand. So we'll go pick up at the, at the Port of Houston. And so even that, even, even, even when it comes to that, with our tractor trailers, it'll be mostly our trucks as well.
Mr. McLaren?
So whenever you, you said you have about thirty trucks coming in and out, do they all leave at the same time? Or do they, it's just sporadic during, during the day? Or how's that work?
Yeah, so, you know, on typically in our business, like, the, the, the larger concrete pours happen early in the morning before really anyone gets on the road. You know, and then it starts slowing down throughout the day and usually by mid afternoon. In the, in the summertime, usually by ten or eleven o'clock in the morning, people quit pouring concrete, right? It's too hot outside. But it, it starts slowing down pretty dramatically mid morning. And so to answer your question, on top of that as well, the batch plant, you can only make so much concrete at a time. So it's not like all ten trucks are leaving first thing in the morning. So they are kind of staggered ten, fifteen minute intervals.
So it's ten trucks about three times a day coming in and out?
Yeah, roughly. Yeah, yeah, roughly each truck's pouring about thirty yards a day.
Okay, I was picturing like thirty trucks in a row.
No, 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 that'll, that'll never be this, never be the case.
And the other thing is, is so you want this thing on a, on the truck route. And I know the owner of that, of that property has been asking for it to be on the truck route. Because if it is, it makes that property, property a lot more valuable to him. I don't know that I'm for like actually putting that on the truck route. I'm, I'm more leaning towards keeping it like it is and just be accessible for whoever needs to be, you know, accessible to. Because I think that if we do change it or we agree to change it, then, I mean, there's no guarantee he's going to sell it to you, you know? Like, I mean, he could get a better offer and, and sell it to somebody else.
And, and you're not wrong. I mean, I mean, I mean, you're, you're not wrong. I know that there's been a lot of interest in this property until they realize it's not on the truck route, you know? And then they can't do what they want to do with the business. And, you know, that's obviously, you know, what, I guess what, we're not a, we're a trucking company per se, but really we're, we're a concrete, we're a, we're a concrete manufacturer, a concrete producer. And so that's where I think, and, and look, at the end of the day, the property, you know, I think someone mentioned this a second ago, the property, there's not too many ways you could use this property. There's power lines going through it. It's, you know, as far as developing, developing it, you can't put like a warehouse on it unless you got really, really, really creative. And so you, you, you're absolutely right, though. I mean, I'm sure that would make a lot more people interested in the property.
Ms. Williams?
So since we're, since we're discussing zoning, I'm, I am also concerned about giving it a heavy industrial, a, a heavy industrial zoning right there. I mean, that's where everybody has to pass that thing by to go to, to go to Main Street. I mean, we're, we're steadily trying to fix Main Street up. And to have heavy industrial sitting right there, we've got neighborhoods over there. Is there any way at all for you to do what you need to do in a light industrial? Can, can we not operate under light industrial?
No, Councilmember Williams, unfortunately, the NACs code, without us changing the zoning code to allow for this in light industrial, it is a heavy industrial use. The beauty of going with a SCUP is that we can really, we can really narrow the uses down potentially and say, this is going to be the only use. So we're not opening up a can of worms in terms of allowing any sort of heavy industrial into that site. I did also, there's been some discussion of the truck route. I do, do want to clarify that this use is not required to be on the truck route. It's not one of those five NACs codes that's in the zoning code. So, yeah, staff, staff would be supportive of, of not extending the truck route here. Because as, as Mr. McLaren said, really, the concern would be that if you do put it on the truck route, we may get some unintended uses that would be interested in that site, so.
Yeah, and one thing, and most of y'all probably aware of this, but one thing I have to mention too, is just south of there, there's another current, current, current property is being used for a batch plant. And, and then, you know, to the, to the west is obviously the railroad tracks. I think the closest house is probably a couple blocks, two or three blocks to the east. And then obviously to the north is, is, is West Main, right?
All right, I got a couple of questions for you. So in your rendering, you've got, it looks like the silos are in the middle of the square. What are y'all going to do with that little tail that sticks down there?
I'm trying to, I don't want to mess anything up.
Yeah, that, that looks like.
How's that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so as of right now, we don't have any plans per se for that.
Can you move those silos to that back square?
The, the, the problem with that, Mayor, is that like for the way that the property is situated, I think that's like two acres and maybe like five acres in the front. And really in order to, you know, make our, our, our operations efficient, is we kind of really need that, the batch plant right there. You know, there's a lot of science that goes into putting batch plants in with trucks. And, you know, obviously, the less you got to turn and, and, you know, the quicker you can do turnarounds and stuff. To answer your question, we could, but at that point, you know, is the property feasible from a sense of, of, you know, turnaround times?
The best use of the property.
Correct.
Matt, can you put the other picture back up? So it looks like there's three, possibly four buildings that are currently on there. I know those are older buildings. Are y'all planning on keeping all of those? Because in the rendering, there's just one building shown.
Yeah, so actually, these two buildings, let me see if I can, these, I think this building and this building isn't on the property. It's just this building is the only building on the property. So I want to say the property, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, I want to say the city actually owns this strip of land right here. I don't know if y'all can see my, yeah. And, and then it kind of jots out and goes back around this way, I believe. And then I want to actually say the city owns this, there's a, there's a little plat, little, little.
But, yeah, I think we sold, sold that right away.
Okay, yeah, so to answer your question, Mayor, it's just this building right here.
Okay, and, and you'd keep that building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what's, what's going to be, is that going to be offices or?
Yeah, offices, I think there's like, we could use like a little truck maintenance shop, you, you know, use it a bay for that. It's, it's a, it's a fairly small building, so.
And possibly the most important question of the evening, we're not going to get that surfer picture on there, would we? Something a little more.
So, so funny story behind that, I didn't realize how hard it was to put a rendering together, rendering together without, without a survey. And so it was a lot of creativity, we found a company out of Utah. And we told them, hey, you know, we want to do coastal theme or something. And they came back with that and we were like, let's just leave it, like, let's not get too lost and, and get them caught up and waste, spending more time on coming up with a good. We, we would, we would obviously get y'all's input on that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone got any other questions for you? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Are we looking to give direction or?
This was just a workshop, is that correct, Ryan?
Yes, it is a workshop, but if there is any direction, if, if this is something that council would be interested in, in at least exploring, that we can continue to have these conversations and begin moving it through the zoning process.
You want to make a suggestion?
Yeah, I think it's a worthwhile project, so.
You want to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Please, Clark says we don't have to.
Don't need a motion, okay.
All right, thank y'all.
Yeah. Thank you, Ryan.
Item seven B, presentation, discussion, and possible action to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five thousand six, designating the Hometown Press as the city's official newspaper. Item seven B one, the city council, pardon me, will it meet enclosed session with the city attorney to discuss legal issues in connection with agenda item seven B, the selection of the Hometown Press as the official newspaper of the city of La Porte, under Texas Government Code Section five five one point oh seven one two.
Point of order, question. Wade, I believe, wanted to address this council prior to us considering this action. Should we hear his comments before going into executive session?
You can if you want.
I mean, you, you can, but just remember, once we come out of executive session, that's when we will take up the action item and you could hear comments at that point as well, but.
So we can wait till after, probably better to wait till after. Okay, I'm good with whatever council.
We're going to be asked to make a decision in executive session. I would, I think it'd be beneficial to have as much information upfront.
Okay, that's good, all right.
Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity to visit with you. My name is Wade Thibodeau with the Hometown Press, thirteen four fifty-one FM sixteen sixty-three in Winnie. I've been doing this publishing gig for about forty years, almost forty years, started in nineteen eighty-six. Published anything from hometown newspapers to national magazines. Even had the opportunity to, and the privilege to work with Ms. Lee at her previous job at Huntsville. We have one of our publications is in Huntsville. And so y'all are lucky to have her. I don't know how you were able to steal her away, but y'all are very lucky to have that lady as your city secretary. We are a local newspaper. We are a legal newspaper to conduct and print legal notices. Maggie and I have collaborated on this project to help you to get your legal notices published, to save you some money. And we want to be a great partner with the city of La Porte. I don't have a whole lot else to say, other than if any of you had any questions, I would be more than happy to answer those questions so y'all could kick it around in executive session, if anybody has any questions.
Mr. Martin?
Are there requirements that the legal paper be in the same county as the community?
It, it has to be published, which is defined as assembled and distributed, which is where Maggie comes in as collaborator. She puts the paper together as far as sending all of the articles and all of that stuff. The paper's printed in Harris County, it's delivered to her house where she assembles it. And then she distributes from her office here in La Porte. And so I believe it meets the legal qualifications to be assembled and distributed in Harris County. Much as, and if I could continue, much as the Baytown Sun does for the city of Mount Bellevue. Baytown Sun's in Harris County, city of Mount Bellevue's in Chambers County, and they are their official paper of record. Ours would just be an inverse relationship. We would be in Chambers and y'all would be in Harris.
Thank you.
Mr. Gear?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been distributing here in La Porte?
We started this about three or four months ago, I guess. So when Maggie and I were able to work out the details and we've been including around the base section for about three or four months, I guess. We've been in publication, this paper has been in publication since nineteen ninety-one. We're not, we're not, not only anybody. We're not, we're not, not only do anybody think we're new to the, to the, to the deal here, we've been doing it for thirty, almost thirty-five years.
Anybody else? Mr. McLaren?
Who was, who was doing the paper before?
I'm sorry, who was doing what paper?
Who was doing our LaPorte paper?
I, I, it's my understanding it was Bay Area Observer, and, and they, the lady unfortunately passed away, she got very ill, she ceased publications. I, I don't know what all happened, somebody tried to pick the paper up, but because of the lack, the lapse in service and her not being in business for a year, she does not qualify as a legal paper. And so I think y'all are using a Baytown Sun at this point in the game.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The city council will meet in closed session with the city attorney to discuss legal issues in connection with agenda item seven B, selection of the Hometown Press as the official newspaper of the city of LaPorte, under Texas Government Code Section 551.0712. The time is seven PM.
Oh, really?
You didn't come get one? It's always.
I didn't get one either.
Don't worry, brother.
Wait, Thibodeau.
Oh, we got, I got it. When Scott was out.
You're David or no?
Do you feel better? Yeah, you feel better. My daddy was so corny with saying, how do you feel with my hands?
Yeah.
Yeah, he knew all those old jokes. Everybody, you see that, who's buried out there, that crumble? Hey, I didn't know you needed a question.
I know, man. I see one with those.
Did you notice when it came to the Texas players, you backed off?
Y'all have to see, I haven't tied it to you. Didn't recognize, what did you get here inside of the beer, you lost, right? I'm not gonna ask you what, I just. How do you recognize?
And he's out of you. Very short memories, yeah. And that those things, yeah, they're probably so. That's what we need to do, we need to run Maggie's picture on a. Now, we don't want some post office. Maggie's picture.
What do you say?
Well, I didn't know you were. But where's the bush? The one loyal first. Yeah. No. I don't think anyone else today. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree. Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's different. I appreciate it. Very much. Yeah, I was just getting the, I was just getting back to my parents, so. Yeah, I mean, it was a lot, it really was. Yeah, awesome, thank you. Oh, so you mentioned those. That's what I do.
Not not in. Not not in. Not not in. Yeah. I'm.
But I. I don't want to go.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's.
Like some.
Yeah. Watch. They have. By the guy. Ball. But. Ball.
That's. I would. Oh, yeah. I need. Speech. They look. I see. Right here. Yeah. See.
How's it?
But.
Tax. Something like that. Just something. I just can't. Think. One inside. Well. I feel like. Sun. There was. That's a. They're cheap. They got signs from upper. Porky's. They're in charge. Or I've got. All four visitors. They're all.
Same.
So they said. Or it's. Okay. So. We. Nice. Besides. President. Well, it's. I got. Oh. Last one. It's like. Go out there. I know. That's why. Yep. That's. Oh. Oh. It's that thing. And there is. Um. Yeah. I've. Thank. Oh, what the? I don't. I didn't get. Yeah. Anyway, yeah. Yeah.
I think. I was.
No. Oh, I said. No. But I. I have some. Yeah. I'm sorry.
I think.
I don't.
Yeah.
Uh.
Sure.
I'm back. I'd be.
Yeah.
Yes. Cause that's what I like to do, but I don't everybody. Yeah. Yeah.
Smile on his face.
Oh, yeah. He's.
And I'm.
Yeah. Then.
Listen.
I'll just. That's. There's been. There's. So he has. It's. That we don't. Be good. Yeah. You know.
Save a lot of things at thirty nine year. Night.
So.
But I see. It's always.
First. You. But you got told. You know. Are you gonna? So she's. You're already.
Oh, the. I mean. There.
If you. Also. Okay.
So.
And just.
So we. These. And the. I'm. It really don't. It's.
True. Small.
Who will be.
And. It's. That's. I'd. Better see her. I don't.
This.
I don't know. She's still. You're going to friends. Cops. It's. But. Anyways. I had. I know. This is. Over. And one. Down. It's. On a. I just.
That's. For your.
Like. Okay. Down.
I think. This is. This is. Who is?
What's that?
I think.
Five years. Last. Yeah. Okay. It's two. 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 Played back. So. A couple of. And I'm. Way in and Washington. Go out. Chicago. And.
This is. Yeah.
It's. You try. Well, she. Pop show.
Yeah. But. About that. All right. Do this.
Swirl. You can't. You do. Like the. I'll say that. Yeah. Yeah. Driving everybody crazy. I don't. Doesn't. About that. Or. Oh, yeah. Paul. It was their class.
He's. He's.
They're. It's. It's. Why? I think.
In person. I'll.
Hey.
Take me just. To.
That's. Very small. Block. Yeah. Yeah. Probably.
Right. And he like. Take.
Yeah. He brought. And. So. I think. That's. The baby. And you must. Yeah. So. Takes.
I wanna. Sorry.
Projects. Yeah. My. Every year.
Have you saw? They put. Something. We.
Try to do it like. I mean.
Oh. They. Same thing.
But.
It was. Seemish. I sometimes.
You just get your feet wet.
You got.
Yeah. Yeah, like. And. Kids. You're gonna work. The. Yes, I know. And already. Have. It's like. Now that part. Pulling. But. Same dude. Yeah. What's. Yeah. Nobody.
I know. She. Mark.
Yeah. Such. Are you?
There's. One. I'm. Three. I know. I'm.
Interesting.
They. Looked at.
I don't know. I can.
Size.
So.
Uh. They have. So there's. It'll. So we. Show them.
Harder.
That my case. So.
But. Yeah. The. Do you understand? That box.
There's ways. I'm.
That box.
Oh.
They don't. They are. I. We're looking at maybe pictures. Four years. And. I was.
Well, there are some. And some. Yeah. I did.
Yeah.
That way.
Yeah.
They really. So.
Yeah. It's.
On it all.
Yes. And. She got all. She.
Yeah. Um. And. People. Got out. Follow.
Yeah. I was. Here. For people. She. Are costing my brother.
Yeah.
And that was.
So. She. I'm. I know.
Oh, okay.
It is.
It's. For.
I made.
That baby shark.
Hello. I also. That. It's.
We're. What? For. Uh. We're one twenty eight. Okay.
I don't.
Okay. Do you hear a laugh? Face.
I feel strong.
There's a lot of. The. Which. Yeah. I love. It's. This.
Like.
No, no. At least. And by. Go. I'm. They. I do. Twenty. If more. Then. And they. Also. Oh. That's.
They.
But. Yeah, you can. So. So. So for example. I. Brother. House. Yeah. Yeah. Uh. Because. It's. Yeah. But really. So. I had. So. Another thing. Like. As. Yes. The. Already. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. So. You're. You're on. So. So. There. So. So. Right. If I. See.
I like. My.
Now. Left. So. Sorry.
Counsel is back in session at seven forty one. Mr. McLaren.
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance. Two zero two five dash five oh oh six designated the hometown press as the city's official newspaper. Pending the signed affidavit provided by the city attorney and provided proof that the paper has received second-class postal matter status from the UPS. USPS.
Uh, in in Harris County.
In Harris County.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. McLaren. We have a second by Mr. Bentley. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Here. Motion carries. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash five zero zero six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of La Porte, Texas, designating the hometown press as the official newspaper for the city of La Porte, Texas, containing a severability clause, containing repealing clause, under compliance with the open meetings act, and providing an effective date hereof.
Item seven C, discussion regarding consolidation of the city of Shore Acres with the city of La Porte.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir. I will. I'll dive right in. So, um. I I'm not sure exactly where to start. Uh, I know that that you all are probably, uh, or several. I've I've heard from some council members who have heard on rumors that, uh, there's an effort afoot to consolidate the two cities, Shore Acres and, um, the city of La Porte. Uh, I just wanted to visit with you because, uh, we have had some conversations with the leadership, um, uh, starting, what, several months ago, I think the the then mayor reached out, uh, to to us and asked us what, uh, when I say us, I think myself and and Mayor Hilton, uh, what we our thoughts were. Um, and so, uh, just really wanted to put this item on the agenda, uh, to let you know that, A, that conversation's being had, uh, and that there are some things that I that we obviously have to consider, uh, if we move forward. And the first being that, you know, it's gonna require two elections take place. Uh, it's not something that just can unilaterally happen. Um, uh, both communities will have to approve it in the form of an election. Uh, and having said that, if we are to move forward, there are a lot of intricacies, things that we would have to figure out how these things happen. I mean, communities don't consolidate very often, and unfortunately, there's probably a reason for that, uh, that it's it's when two become one, it's always, uh, really difficult. So, uh, some some things that I just, uh, wanted to toss out to make sure that, you know, council's clear on, and anyone from Shore Acres that I've spoke with, uh, would be that if if a consolidation were ever to take place, uh, that La Porte would not change its standards. I think the two communities have different standards as it relates to code enforcement, as it relates to building, uh, uh, standards, as it relates to all the things that that we do day in and day out. And so, uh, there's, uh, you know, has to be an appreciation that our standards don't don't change, uh, in the event that we're ever consolidated. Um, and also to just give counsel an opportunity to to ask myself or Clark or, uh, anybody here, any questions you may have, because again, I know that, uh, several of you are hearing about this, um, from people in the community.
Mr. Martin.
I know that Shore Acres is having some difficulties. Uh. What would be the worst-case scenario if Shore Acres were unable to resolve, uh, their issues and didn't have enough revenue to support their infrastructure needs? Would it become a ward of the county at that point, or what would happen?
Yeah, I I think, um, so, well, let me say this, based on the information I've gotten, and I believe it to be reliable information, there there are under some very dire circumstances. Um, um. Anyway, I and I I don't wanna, uh. They're on some very dire circumstances. I'll I'll leave it at that. Uh, but yes, I believe that they're really they're faced with, uh, really three options. And one, and this is just Corby's opinion, right? One is that they, uh, do whatever it takes, uh, and, uh, pull their city back together, right? I mean, uh, and just so you know, of anybody that that doesn't know, they currently do not have a mayor. Um, at the time that I put the agenda pack together, they didn't have a city administrator. Uh, their city administrator has now stepped in, but is, uh, he's only agreed to fulfill that role until March. Uh, and I, as I understand it, Lee, please correct me if I'm wrong, there's no city secretary. Uh, there there is no city secretary. There is one now. There is a city secretary now. So so, um, so that's one option. It's for them to, uh, get the resources and people, uh, to pull together and solve their issues. The other is just to completely dissolve, at which point, if they dissolve, they become an unincorporated Harris County. They're they're not a part of any, uh, municipal jurisdiction. Uh, and then the third option, as I see, uh, and again, there's a lot of steps that have to happen for this to be, um, a a reality, but would would be for them to consolidate, uh, and become a part of La Porte. So those are the three options that I think, uh, exist in the world for for.
Could they consolidate with Pasadena? Aren't they contiguous?
Uh, they 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 do have a strip that is, uh, no, I don't think they are. No, no, sir. We we're on the other side of them. We have a strip that would be, and then, uh, Pasadena has a piece on the waterfront, and so we would be contiguous with Pasadena, but I don't believe they are.
Mr. Garrett.
No, I was just gonna. I was just gonna, being from having worked in Pasadena, I was just gonna clarify that, uh, I know what you're thinking about, but it's it's going, it it that strip, yeah, that strip goes down to the Bayport Channel, down to El Hardine, but it doesn't, it's not adjacent to us and didn't connect to us in any way.
Mr. McCollum.
Corby, what's the difference between consolidation and annexation?
Uh, well, consolidation, uh, well, let's back up. An annexation typically happens when you have an unincorporated area. So say, for instance, if we wanted to annex the area north of two twenty five, but it's currently, it's not its own city, it's not. So a consolidation is when you have two.
Okay.
Bonafide. I mean, they have a they have a city government. Uh, they're struggling at the moment, but they have a city government, and so, uh, they would, uh, at this point, it would be a consolidation.
And when you said there would have to be two elections, um, what's the earliest that could happen? And I heard that there if there if it was passed by Shore Acres, we have a certain or there is a certain time limit that the second our election would have to take place, so it would have to be a special election or it would be a general election?
So I we we've gone back and forth on timing, and Clark, I'll let you speak to it, but I believe the maximum time limit is forty five days. Is that, do I remember correctly? So, uh, but I also believe that there is a possibility that we could have the elections in tandem.
That that's one possibility. Um, it does say, the statute does say that, and and again, just wanna clarify that for consolidation to happen at all, there has to be an election in both cities, and in each case, those elections ha- occur only because there's been a citizen's petition, uh, received by the respective government. So it's not something that the city council and either city can on its own motion.
Uh.
Okay.
Call for an election. There the the statute's clear, there has to be a citizen's petition, in this case, both in Shore Acres with with a requisite number of people, and then citizen's petition in La Porte. Uh, if those two petitions are received, then, um, you can, you know, potentially you can have an election. Um, and let me say, when it comes to the petition, there's, uh, if if it's a hundred, uh, in in either city, if if you get a a hundred qualified voters to sign, then it says the the city council may call an election. If you get, um, a petition signed by at least fifteen percent of the of the number of qualified voters who who voted in the. Have to order an election. Uh, but but bottom line is, there has to be some form of petition received by the governments in Shore Acres and La Porte for it to even be considered. Um, but if that happens, if you get a petition, um, and it's, you know, one where the council can does can call an election, but they do, or you get one where it's at least fifteen percent of the people who voted before, and you do, uh, then the statute says that the election does have to take place on a uniform uniform election date, which is, uh, we think of as May, and then also November. Uh, that's when it'd have to happen, but you have to, the 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 councils would have to call it within forty five days of when the petition is is received. Not holding it, but calling.
Right.
So they the the in in each case, the council would act, would have to act quickly if they get a petition with the requisite number of of signers, uh, to call, meet as an ordinance, uh, establishing the date, which, uh, again, would have to be a uniform, uh, uh, date.
And then the secretary's office would validate the signatures to make sure they're our voters and. Right? Okay.
Her office, yeah, they would have to go through that whole process.
Okay.
To do that. But to Corby's point, the statute, uh, does, uh, uh, say that the 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 normal procedure is the there's two separate election, well, there are separate elections, the small city goes first, and then assuming that the larger city also received a petition and they call an election, then they go next. Um, but, you know, each election has to be on a uniform election date. There is, in that same section, a provision that says the cities can, um, hold it on the same day. Doesn't give a lot of guidance on how you do that, how it works, but it says as an alternative to separate elections, where they're held sequentially, you can have it held on the same day, which again, would have to be on a u- uniform election date, which would be May or, um, November.
So there's no chance of a special election if to to meet with that forty five days, you just have to call it within the forty five.
Yeah, you have to call it.
So we can go May to November if that's what the case.
You can only on the election as far as I read the statute, either in May or November.
All right, thank you.
So my question, Corby, what's what is the pros and cons of doing consolidation?
For who?
For La Porte.
For for, um. Well, it's probably a little bit easier to answer the pros for, uh, well, let me say this, uh, we've not done just a whole lot of work on in in terms of how this would happen. Uh, but just on the face of it, obviously, uh, we have a more stable government. Uh, I believe, um, there would be a a great benefit to them. Um, I I if there was a benefit to the city of La Porte, I would say that if we're faced with dissolution, uh, and they become part of Harris County, uh, there becomes a part, uh, Shore Acres actually, there's kind of severs our community. We're on, we're to the north, and we have a small section of La Porte to the south, and so, uh, you'd have a section that's essentially in our community that is, um, uh, isn't governed by any code enforcement standards, uh, relies on the county primarily for law enforcement. Um, so, you know, just, and then some of the partnerships that we develop with them in terms of providing, uh, EMS and fire services, well, you know, those go away, because now we don't have anybody to contract. So, uh, but again, I think that that there's a potential, that's a really, uh, the greater benefit potentially is to Shore Acres than La Porte.
Ms. Williams.
I need to expand on on what Corby had mentioned about them being a ward of Harris County. You can think about fireworks, you can think about a lack of animal control, you can think about a lack of, um, of any type of of, uh, of like cleanup, like the the mowing of the vacant lots, or the buildings being condemned after they've been down. It it kind of makes, it makes their quality of life go down, and it makes our residents' quality of life go down when we lose those services to that area. And and I think that's what I think that's what Corby might have been trying to to say in that without being able to really say it. But you you just have a lapse in services, and it makes things rough on the citizens of Shore Acres, and and then by being next to it, it makes things rough on this on District Five over in La Porte. Y'all y'all border them, don't you? So it it makes it difficult on y'all as well. I kind of look at this as preserving the equity in our community. Let's keep up the standards, not only for our neighbors, but but keep up the standards for for ourselves as well.
Chuck.
Yeah, I know this question's come up several times over the years, and I guess the last consolidation was the LOMAX for La Porte back in nineteen seventy seven. But, you know, I would have to agree that it's probably the right thing to do. However, with their infrastructure being seventy five years old, their roads being that way, and their tax rate being a little different, if that would ever come to fruition, I mean, it would have a severe impact on our budgetary needs because of the pending problems with their infrastructure. Uh, cause I know over the last ten or fifteen years, this has come up before, and it's always been a concern. What would it cost to bring their their infrastructure up to our standards? Because I know, uh, we're still dealing with some of the LOMAX issues right now. Okay, and that was, uh, back in nineteen seventy seven. Now, it's almost fifty years ago. So so, you know, there are issues with that, but, you know, as a community, it's probably the right thing to do. However, there's a ton of expenses and challenges associated with that because of of all the infrastructure needs, you know? Population-wise is what, eighteen hundred? You know, that's that's the size of a subdivision with, uh, you know, Morgan's Landing, you know, it wouldn't alter council districts, I wouldn't think, cause it's not big enough swing, and you'd have the twenty, thirty census to redo the redistricting at that time. But, you know, as as far as a neighbor, it's probably the right thing to do, but there's a huge downside to the bringing it up to the standards. That's all.
Mr. Garrett.
Just one question, Clark. In in order for this consolidation to occur, and you're talking about petitions, uh, Shore Acres would have to initiate their petition first, right?
Um, the statute doesn't say that they would have that the petition has to happen there first, uh, but it does say, um, that unless you have a joint election, unless we both get petitions and we agree to have a joint election, um, in in the normal course of events. Um, well, it's gonna be, it does say the smaller city goes first. They would have their election first.
I mean, it'd be almost like a notice of intent, you know, this is what, you know, that that we the consolidation.
Right. Right, but, you know, they could get a petition with the requisite number of signatures and even theoretically hold an election, but if we don't get a petition, there's no consolidation because there's.
I just wanted.
Takes election on both sides.
What the process would be? Does the smaller city initiate the petition first, and then we go after them, or?
No, it it there's nothing about. No, it, it, there's nothing about one city going first in terms of a petition. It just says each city has to have a petition in order to, uh, cause an election in each city. Uh, when that happens, it does say that, um, the smaller city would have its election first. Then you go down, there's a little part in the bottom, unfortunately, it's just one sentence, it doesn't say much. If they want, they can hold a joint election, you know, we get to figure out how to do that. Mitch Martin?
Oh. I know it's really early in the process, uh, and I, you know, we're District Five, we, we're really close neighbors to Shore Acres and I've got a ton of friends out there. Um, I know that Shore Acres' general budget is about two million dollars. Uh, their revenue is equal to about what our golf course brings in, about one point five million. I know they've got around, I think, ten million dollars in CIP projects on the books. Um, I, I guess if it comes to an election, we're going to need to know, I would need to know how it's going to affect our tax rate. Um, and I'm sure Shore Acres citizens would want to know the same thing. Uh, how it's going to affect our budget, as, as Councilman Englekin mentioned. Um, but, uh, I think it's, I think we could, we could make it happen. I just think we need to educate the electorate, uh, as much as possible so that, um, once it's all said and done, nobody comes back and says, well, hey, we didn't know we're going to have to put up with this or do this or change this.
We say the same thing about LOMAX all the time.
That's LOMAX. Uh, maybe it's not a good, no, okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Mr. Alexander, you had something?
Yeah, well, just, just, I guess to respond to Councilman Englekin, uh, absolutely. If, if this, uh, appears that, uh, it, it is something that we'll have to, uh, deal with, uh, you know, I've already started talking with staff to identify how each individual department would be impacted from, uh, garbage. I will say this, just, just from personal knowledge, um, Shore Acres generates a lot of heavy garbage. And so, uh, we struggle now to stay on top of our heavy garbage. And so, uh, what, what's the impact? Does, does that have for us? Uh, and can we, because at no point do we want our service level to drop for our citizens that we have now. And so, uh, if this starts to, uh, move forward, we'll certainly, uh, it will be my responsibility uh, to make sure that we identify all the things that will be necessary to make sure that we don't experience the service drop. So there, there would definitely be some, uh, some cost increase. Uh, and to the issue of the redistricting, I'll let Clark handle that. We, we've had some discussions on that.
Right, I, I had mentioned to Corby, uh, that I was going to contact, uh, Bob Heath. He's the attorney with the firm of Bickerstaff, you may remember. I believe it was two years ago, um, we had hired that firm to handle the redistricting process. They, they have a division where, uh, they have a lot of expertise in, uh, running those programs for cities. So we hired them and they did a great job. Uh, so because Mr. Heath was obviously very, very familiar with, uh, our city and the numbers, uh, I did, uh, email him last week and asked him, you know, his opinion if this were to happen, um, would we be eligible to wait to redistrict until after the twenty, thirty census? Or, um, would we be forced or would we be vulnerable if we did not, um, go ahead and redistrict then? Uh, hi- his response, well, number one, they'd be happy to help and, uh, manage the process for us. But, uh, his, his take was that, uh, probably it would be necessary, um, for our own protection legally, um, to go ahead and do it if it happens, because, you know, as he pointed out, there, there's what's called the one man, one vote rule, that constitutional principle that, um, you know, the, the, the population deviation is supposed to be within about ten percent among the six districts, um, so that, you know, some people, some voters don't have more power than others because their district's a lot smaller. Um, his, his numbers were that if it were to happen, that you would, you would then have a deviation, as he says in his email, of more than twenty-seven percent. Um, we're, we're looking at District Five, obviously, since that's the adjacent district using the twenty, twenty census data. And, and, and so his illustration was, um, if you had an unhappy voter, specifically one who was part of Shore Acres, is now in La Porte, um, and if they were to sue and they were to be able to compel redistricting, not only would that happen, but that the city would most likely be on the hook for their attorney's fees as well. Um, you know, not to mention the publicity of a constitutional violation. So anyway, his recommendation was, yeah, we might, we might be doing that. Uh, and then of course, doing it again after twenty, thirty.
So back to Mr. Martin's point, that would all be spelled out before, if, if we ended up going to this election, that would all make sure we'd spell that out for our citizens.
I would say that is valid point as, this is garbage or taxes or anything else, just, right. It's, it's, that's one issue.
And Corby, currently we're providing EMS, we're providing fire, we provide jails. So we're already providing a lot of services. We mutual, we mutual aid with police regularly when needed. Um, so those are expenses they've got coming out of their budget that we would just simply absorb. Am I correct?
Correct, I mean, so that, when I say partnerships, those are the partnerships that are in place that obviously, you know, whatever revenue we derive from those partnerships would go away.
Okay, yeah, and their sewer currently goes to Texas something or?
Coastal, do you know where they, Gulf Coast.
Gulf Coast waste, so we would assume keep that in place since it doesn't cost anything?
I, I would, yeah, I mean, I, I think that, that all of the sewer from the south side goes to the same place.
Okay.
Uh, so I, I wouldn't anticipate that being a change. Uh, and they are part of, uh, La Porte Area Water Authority, so the water source is the same. Uh, I think the, the, um, difference is the delivery system. You know, our, our system, uh, distribution and collection, uh, distribution on the water and collection on the wastewater, uh, don't know the condition of that, their system. Uh, so there would have to be some, necessarily be some work to figure out what the condition is, what the age of their infrastructure is, uh, what the, um, uh, timeline for rehab or replacement of all their infrastructure will be, would be.
Do, do we have any idea when we're going to start reaching out? I mean, could we reach out now and just go ahead and check those facilities out in the anticipation there may be something coming on the May ballot?
Uh, we, we certainly could, I mean, obviously that requires their cooperation.
Correct.
Uh, my communications with, uh, the Shore Acres reps that I've, that have been in communication with me have been very, very cordial. Uh, I would suspect that they'd be happy to, uh, provide us whatever data that, that we think we, we need to make sure you guys are informed as to what the potential costs for us are.
Right.
Mr. McCully?
Yeah, just, uh, I know we're way early in this game, but you would anticipate their tax rate would drop tremendously to, to match ours, correctly?
It's my understanding, their, their tax rate is substantially higher than ours.
Right, so theirs would come down, so obviously they'd be in favor of it. Do you anticipate any increase in our tax rate to, and to those services?
I think it's a possibility, I mean, depending on what that cost is, because if, if you, uh, if you look at their budget, right, to operate, it's built on a higher tax rate. And so, uh, if we're to bring their system up to our standards and all those things, well, we just have to figure out how we pay for those things.
Right.
Um, ob- obviously, a tax rate is the very last thing on our list of things to do. Uh, so I would, we would do everything we could to avoid it, I, let me say that.
I, I agree, it's, but the residents would need to understand that if they do vote for this, that there's a possibility their tax rate may increase.
It, it, it could, the one thing we haven't looked at, I mean, well, and, 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 or maybe not, because, um, when you look at their water and wastewater, uh, those expenses should be borne on their, those utility funds. And so maybe you're talking about rate adjustments as opposed to, uh, taxes.
Yeah.
Uh, now, having said that, our, uh, utility rates are very, very low. Uh, and we've subsidized it from the general fund as well. And so, we would just have to do some math to figure out how we make it all. What, what's the bottom line number and what's the way to get there without impacting La Porte residents today?
Right, I just want to make sure we, when this comes, as Mr. Martin mentioned, that there's no surprises.
Yes, sir, yes.
All right, thanks.
I agree. Ms. Williams?
Is it an option to make that area like a mud district?
It, it, it would, absolutely, they, they would need to go through that process, which I think also requires an election.
But they, but they're already paying a higher tax, they're already paying a higher tax rate in order to have those services? Would it not be feasible to say, okay, y'all are going to keep your tax rate so that we can continue to provide you with these services?
So, okay, so if, if they were to incorporate into a mud, so similar to, um, Morgan's Landing, is that, I, I guess that the question?
Well, that was the question, but then I thought about it and it, uh, what I'm really asking is, can they not just keep their tax rate so that taking them on doesn't cost our residents as much? Because our residents, they gain, they gain some peace of mind of, of not having Harris County next door. But really, the, the citizens of Shore Acres will have the, the better end of the stick because they're going to maintain good, they're going to maintain good services that, that we have been providing. And perhaps they would not be averse to, to maintaining the tax level they currently live with in order to, in order to be provided those services that they know are coming every month and every week.
So, so if they were to incorporate and create a mud, they'd have one tax. If they were to consolidate with the city, in addition to that, they'd have that tax and a city tax, just like Morgan's Landing. So they would become an in-city mud, just like Morgan's Landing is. Is that the question?
But at that point, would we be able to, and, and I'm not saying, they don't need to be paying a mud ta- a mud district tax that's at the top of the, you know, that's at the top of the line. But just enough to maintain what it is that they are bringing to the table now. If it were, if it were something that would keep their tax level at, at the rate that it is now so that they continue to pay for the services that we, we provide right now. Not, not take them down to our level, just bring them on at whatever tax rate that they're currently on. And they help pay their own way.
Okay, so here's, here's what I think I hear you saying, please correct me if I'm not correct. So the, it, well, in incorpor- or, or consolidation means that everybody that is now a La Porte resident has the same tax rate, right? Now, is there a way to figure out an additional tax rate for what, if we're a year or two down the road, what used to be Shore Acres? Uh, could there be a mud in place that taxed them ten cents or, uh, eleven cents that would then fund some of those improvements? I, I think that's a possibility, I would have two cautionary notes. I'm not sure that there's enough gap between those two to fund everything that we'd have to do, right? I mean, so you'd be taking, let's, I mean, a realistic number is ten to eleven cents per hundred. Not much to work with. Uh, secondly, and I, and I, this is just me off the cuff, right? Uh, and then secondly, when muds are created, they have their own governing bodies. They elect their own leadership. So, uh, our ability to rely on that would really, um, not be great. Because you have a whole nother elected body that doesn't report to this body that gets to decide, you know, maybe they're, maybe they're tired of paying ten cents or eleven cents and they're going to go down to five cents or, hey, we're going to make it go away altogether. So that would be the cautionary note I'd have on that.
So I have one more question if I'm able.
Hmm.
Um. If, that's okay, that's all right, I'm good.
Good. All right, anybody else? All right, uh, like to point out, Mr. Martin's comments and Mr. Englekin's comments, it's probably going to be the right thing to do. And like Jay says, we're the related to somebody over there, we're good friends with them. So, you know, we're going to have to more than likely do it. Cause we don't want the county in the middle of the city, be my look. I'm thinking shooting guns, open flames, fireworks. Right next door to you, Jay. Robbie wants to move. Sounds pretty good, doesn't it, Jake? All right, anything else? All right, appreciate it.
Item eight A, report of the La Porte Drainage and Flooding Committee meeting held on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Yesterday we did meet, earlier today, we discussed, uh, uh, Harris County Flood Control Drainage Projects and ongoing, uh, city drainage projects. And then we set the date for the next meeting to be November, uh, the, the tenth. Thank you.
Administrative reports?
I could come back with a couple of things on administrative reports, one of which being, uh, an update on, uh, the new positions that were included, uh, in the, uh, this year's budget, it started October one of this year. Um, the parks maintenance workers too, uh, one has already been started, the other one starts on the twenty-second. Uh, the rec specialists, they're in the process of interviewing, that's the rec specialist uh, that we needed over at Brookland to make, to, to help make sure our-
That's a part-time position?
That's a part-time position, that's correct. Uh, the airport manager position was just posted, uh, today. Uh, senior mechanic position, uh, was actually a promotion, uh, we promoted internally. Uh, so, uh-
Will we be posting the position he was promoted from?
Absolutely, I may have already done so. Uh, well, I'm certain we've already done so.
Okay.
Uh, solid waste supervisor, um, was also a promotion. Uh, CFP manager, they're developing a shortlist of candidates at this point. So it's, it's been on the street. Uh, and then the part-time recreational spe- uh, sorry, record specialist, uh, for PD. Uh, we're working on a job description and we should have that posted, uh, probably in the next week or two.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, and then the other, uh, follow-up item was on the TURS meeting, uh, on the ninth of this month, as I understood it. So there were three, I'm sorry, really kind of four projects discussed at the TURS meeting on last Thursday. Uh, the first was the lake of, uh, the detention pond at Lakes of Fairmont Green. And, uh, that's the neighbor, the D.R. Horton neighborhood that backs up to the golf course. Uh, some of you may be aware that there's a detention pond, there's actually two detention ponds back there. And they're both, they've really never functioned, they've, the slopes have unraveled over time and it's just never been, uh, fully functional. So there's a project in place that's been designed, uh, and we hope to have bids, bids are out to redo those ponds, to make them slope correctly so that they don't unravel and they can stay clean and, and won't wash out the way that they're doing. So we hope to have those bids open in the next couple of weeks. All right, the other is the, uh, Sixteenth Street, uh, intersection, and that's Sixteenth Street and Spencer. So, um, uh, we, we approached the TURS about, uh, some improvements to Sixteenth Street, enhancements to safety, particularly at the intersection of Sixteenth and, and Spencer. Um, we are on that project, we're kind of waiting on, well, kind of nothing. We're waiting on the county, uh, to decide whether or not we're going to have a partnership arrangement with them. Uh, the county had a hiccup, uh, this summer, they thought they were going to lose some funding, uh, that funding had stayed in place, but we haven't gotten official word from the county that they intend to partner with us. So we're, we're trying to get that word out of them so we can move that project along. Uh, Main Street, um, I wish I could read my handwriting. Uh, so, uh, the, w- we've solicited the Texas City Managers Institute, uh, they're helping us with outreach. Uh, for those of you who are aware, uh, we've talked about some, uh, roadway enhancements on Main Street. Uh, they're performing some study work to see exactly what, uh, can be done. Uh, they've come back with some options, uh, and we're going to start disseminating those ideas and getting that circulated to get feedback from the businesses on Main Street on what they want Main Street to ultimately look like. So that's still in the works. Um, and then lastly, uh, was of, uh, there was a discussion regarding a feasibility study for a lazy, uh, river in the city of La Porte. That's, okay. Uh, so, uh, and, and at the end of the discussion, the TURS board decided not to, to move forward with that project. Um, the idea was for a two thousand, uh, linear foot lazy river, uh, with a cost estimate of four and a half million dollars, uh, that, and that was just kind of the, the very basic of it. Um, and I think the biggest issue with that particular one is we really didn't have a location identified that was really big enough. So the thought was, you know, could you incorporate this into the wave pool area at Little Cedar Bayou? And, and the truth is, there's just not enough room at that location. So if it were to ever move forward, we'd have to identify, uh, I think we, uh, the consultant felt like we need at least four acres, uh, and we just don't have four acres available over there for it. So.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Williams? Counsel comment?
No comment.
No. Mr. Englekin?
No comment today.
Mr. Bentley?
Wow.
Mr. Lunsford?
Mr. McCollum?
Mr. Garrett? Mr. Martin?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I attended the, uh, the meeting at, uh, Silver Beach Pavilion last Wednesday, uh, where the county was there to solicit input for their ideas on, uh, a refurbishing of Silver Beach Park. I would say there were 80 to 100 people there in attendance. Uh, it was a bit unorganized, in my opinion. Uh, I heard a lot of negative com, comments. I was very pleased that, uh, the number of residents that surround the park, uh, were in attendance. Uh, I think the county's got to, uh, a lot of work to do, and, and nobody knows for sure if it's even funded yet. So, um, it was a good meeting, uh, in that, in the regard that I got to talk to a lot of, uh, stakeholders in this project. Uh, the other thing that I would like to request is an update on, uh, status of the Silver Beach Pier Project. Um, I, I know that, uh, that the ball's probably in the county's court right now, but, uh, I get, I get quizzed about it, uh, a lot, so I'd just like to be able to, uh, get an update and be able to respond. And if there was any discussion about the possible wildlife sanctuary on McCabe Road, uh, I know that the, the property owner there was interested in selling that, that property, and there was talk about converting it to a, a wildlife sanctuary. So, that's all I've got.
Did you want to address that, Mr. Alexander?
Uh, I, I certainly can. Uh, it was not discussed on, on the 9th, it wasn't on the agenda for the 9th. Uh, previously it was discussed, and I, I, my, uh, the TURS is more expensive than, I'm sorry, purchasing the property is, uh, at a premium that the TURS didn't appear to be willing to pay. So it is not a project that they're currently pursuing.
Mr. McLaren?
No comment.
All right, I'll follow Mr. Martin's lead and actually say something. Um, I encourage everybody, if you have not been, they're going to have another, um, event at the pavilion on the, I believe it's December the 9th, is that right, Jay, for the county? To talk about the, uh, park. Um, there's parking garages they want to put in, all kinds of fun stuff. So I encourage you to please go out there and let your voice be heard. Uh, they did seem to be paying somewhat attention, uh, but like Jay said, we don't even know if it's funded anymore. So, but I do encourage everybody to go out on December the 9th and, and give them your opinion. With that, we will close the meeting at 8:22.